It's a little dicey right now. Can I talk to you for? Do I have to read this first? My vice chair? Oh, my clerk, this is my clerk, oh, okay.
You're in the seat, you get to, you get to, you get to point to everything.
Oh, okay.
I guess he's gonna take a second, so, yeah.
Can I?
No, no, not yet.
Gavolanti. How did baby start?
So, her.
Girl. Oh, yeah. She'll split about. What's your address? Uh, to make a statement. I don't know. Why? I don't know what it is. Sure, there was my, um. I've only time to move. I think how much it could be. Dude, there's a house across the street from us that's going for just one million. I mean, as you know, it doesn't even have a mortgage. Um, how it's gonna go up on the street. I mean, that's how you want us to, 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 to see people getting a little bit more. And I can't believe we're moving.
Yeah, I may only tend to remember. That's, that's a very strange way of remembering.
I wouldn't think anything would be over, because you basically can't, you know, but you better wind up in my phone lots and lots. Those are nice. No, but it's like.
So, I'm looking at cheap, um, now.
Okay. Yeah. Where do those go from? Make sure you have plenty of room if you're planning on staying, there were twins running around.
Oh, no, I'll go to the house.
Are we ready to, uh, to meet and start them?
You all set, you all set there, Paul?
I was, the chair is just, you know, waiting for her, her vice chair for the night. Who's my clerk?
I got to her first, I said, no.
You didn't bribe me good enough? Okay. Uh, meeting of the zoning board on Tuesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the opening paragraph?
Should we say the pledge of allegiance first?
I'm told we opening first.
She's following the, the agenda.
Yep.
She's gonna make you read. Ron and I credit ourselves, but she wants you to carry your weight here.
The agenda?
Yeah.
Pursuant to chapter twenty. Making you do the work.
All right, we start the chairman, uh.
Look, it's a new chair, a new day.
Pursuant to chapter twenty of the acts of twenty-one, this meeting will be conducted in person and via remote means, according with applicable law. The meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be concluded, will be conducted, excuse me, both in person at the meeting location listed above and via remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandover.gov.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do some on their television by tuning to Comcast Channel Eight or Verizon Channel Twenty-six, or online at www.northandovercam.org. In person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted, and every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technology, via technological means. In the event that we're unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town and North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in a public hearing and not attend the meeting in person, please email your questions, comments prior to the, or during the meeting to jadebattersley@northandovermass.gov. The question comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, I appreciate it.
Me too, Mrs. Clerk.
What's that?
Madam Chair appreciates the reading.
Oh, my pleasure.
Now, can all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The church looks so pretty.
It's beautiful out today.
Okay, can I have a motion for acceptance of the minutes for April twelfth, twenty twenty-two?
I don't, we don't have the minutes?
They were emailed by Jen. She didn't have them at the time, so should I table it for next month?
I don't remember seeing. I mean, if others, if others saw it, then by all means, kind of prepared vote.
I have.
I responded. And still, I mean, they're excellent, they're why.
Yeah, I, I have no comments or changes.
No, no problem at all.
All right.
And I did, I, you know, I missed him, so sorry, so.
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting.
Can I get a second? Thank you, minutes are accepted. Um.
You can need to call a vote, you need a vote.
Sorry.
That's all right.
The vote? Unanimous?
Well, I'm gonna abstain, because I didn't see them.
I'm gonna, yeah, we're both gonna abstain.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. There you go.
You got that, Paul? On who voted?
Jen's got the video.
Oh, okay, so you're just gonna sit there and look pretty, got it.
Oh, Jen's online?
Yes, I forgot, she's online.
She got it.
So pretty.
Is she God? She is God, Jen will pipe in if there's questions that come up via email. Am I able to take these out of order? Does anyone have problems with taking them out of order?
You actually, you have a little footnote there that you are allowed to do that.
Okay.
You can take them all at once, too.
Can I take them all at once?
Yep, now it's gonna be called out of order in just any way that you feel that you want to.
Okay, so.
The application is different, but most of the backup is the same, it's the same, same address, same applicant, all that, so you might as well, I, if I were Chair, I would match them.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, if you want to read the legal notices for all three, I would much appreciate it.
I'm just gonna, sorry, I'll.
Can I, can he just, can he just put in the new parts instead of rereading the entire?
No.
Okay, does everybody get comfortable?
You know, the first question I have to ask the building inspector is this. I understand what you're trying to accomplish here, that there were three separate items that wanted to be determined. Okay, as far as lot line, uh, the watershed and the, and the, uh, the size of the, uh, in-law. But is it necessary that they have to do three separate filings? It can't be included all as one?
Uh, Mr. Kucha, I don't, I don't write the rules on this, this was, uh, told by, uh.
Yeah, okay.
Well, because it's, you need to open it.
This is the way to do it, so I, I can't answer that really, I'll.
You should, you should open the hearing before you ask any questions that pertain to the, so, just the process.
Everybody's got something to say, Alan, you know what I'm saying? Jeez.
I just think it's unfair burden upon the applicant, that's all.
And the clerk is real.
And the clerk, the reader. All right, so, do you want me to read all three at once, or just take them individually?
All three at once, please, Mr. Clerk.
All right, because I don't think you should do all three at once. Notice is hereby given that the, notice is hereby given the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at one-twenty Main Street, North Andover, on Tuesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven-thirty PM to all parties interested in the petition of Brian T. McAnally and Cheryl McAnally for property at fifty-three French Farm Road, map thirty-five, parcel ninety-two, North Andover, Mass., oh-one-eight-four-five, the R-two zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town and North Andover Zoning Bylaws, section one-ninety-five, four-point-one-nine-point-C-point-C. Construction of a new permanent structure in the R-two zoning district for the purpose of constructing in addition onto the pre-existing home, which is located in the Lake and Chickewatt watershed district specifically. Applicant is requesting a variance for relief as to the watershed protection district. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at one-twenty Main Street, North Andover, Mass. On Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from the hours of eight AM to four PM, Tuesday from the hours of eight AM to five-thirty PM, and Friday from the hours of eight AM to eleven-thirty AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, Ron R. Fagan, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
You're welcome. You want, you, you don't want to discuss one before we get to the other? I think you should, but I'm not ready to meet. What do you want me to do?
We need to get you a glass of water.
Yeah, I know, not yet.
We can lump them together.
All right. Legal notice, notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at one-twenty Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven-thirty PM to all parties interested in the petition of Brian T. McAnally and Cheryl McAnally, property at fifty-three French Farm Road, map thirty-five, parcel ninety-two, North Andover, Mass., oh-one-eight-four-five, in the R-two zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town and North Andover Zoning Bylaws, section one-ninety-five dash seven-point-three, Table Two, Summary of Dimension Requirements for One-Side Setback in the R-two Zoning District for the purpose of constructing in addition onto the existing home, including a garage with a family suite. Specifically, applicant has requested a side setback needing a relief variance of fourteen-point-four feet. The side setback proposed is fifteen-point-six feet, the side setback required is thirty feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at one-twenty Main Street, North Andover, Mass. On Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from the hours of eight AM to four PM, Tuesday from the hours of eight AM to five-thirty PM, and Friday from the hours of eight AM to eleven-thirty AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, Ron R. Fagan, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
And last but not least, everybody. Notice is hereby given that the, let's start over. Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at one-twenty Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven-thirty PM to all parties interested in the petition of Brian T. McAnally and Cheryl McAnally, for purpose, for property at fifty-three French Farm Road, map thirty-five, parcel ninety-two, North Andover, Mass., oh-one-eight-four-five, in the R-two zoning district. The applicants are requesting a special permit pursuant to North Andover Zoning Bylaws, section one-ninety-five dash four-point-two-Q, family suite in the R-two zoning district for the purpose of allowing a family suite as part of an addition to the premises. The proposed family suite will be nine-hundred-and-sixty-five square feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at one-twenty Main Street, North Andover, Mass. On Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from the hours of eight, of eight AM to four PM, Tuesday from the hours of eight AM to five-thirty PM, and Friday from the hours of eight AM to eleven-thirty AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, Ron R. Fagan, Chair.
Now you get the night off.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
Good evening, uh, my name is Attorney Rick Byers from the Office of Johnson and Boynstein in Andover. With me is Brian and Cheryl McAnally, and, um, here's Brian.
Yes.
And Cheryl's mother, Joanne.
Joanne.
Uh, who would be living in the family suite has joined us as well. Do you want me to?
You want to let us know what's going on, what you're looking for?
So, yeah, um, basically, um, what they would like to do is put an addition on to the property. It's, it'll be attached to the existing structure, um, and the addition will have a garage on the first floor, and on the second floor would be the family suite. As you heard, we're in the watershed, our favorite topic, one of our favorite topics is the watershed protection. So, we need a, uh, variance for the watershed protection, and I know we'll have to go to planning after this and conservation to deal with that. Uh, the other relief, um, the special permit for the family suite, um, and then the, the relief that we're looking for is for a side setback variance. Between the engineer and the builder, um, it, there was not a lot of options of where to put the addition. Uh, they have a swimming pool in the backyard, um, and because of the shape of the lot and the addition of the pool, uh, the real, really the only place that they feel they, you know, that the engineer and the builder thought, you know, it could be built would be um, to the side and to the rear, um, and that's why we need the variance for the side setback. And that's, anything else?
Basically it?
Basically, yes, yes.
Anyone on, on the board have any questions?
One.
You can jump at any one of them.
Well.
I mean, if you think you want to address one more so than the other, by all means.
Well, I don't know. On two of the issues, I really have no problem, but on one issue, I have quite a bit of problem.
Okay, so I'd say jump on that one.
Okay, so let's jump on that one. And I was looking for my cheat sheet that I made up at my house that I can't seem to find.
I've done that.
You've been there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's far with the square footage of the property. If we jump to the plans that were submitted to us.
The addition L or the?
The existing.
The existing house?
The existing house.
The square footage of the existing house is?
Four thousand something?
No.
Four thousand five hundred thirty-eight, right?
No, I didn't get that number.
So, on, I, maybe, Mr. Kucha, you can tell me if, if this is where you're going with it. Uh, under existing buildings, you list the ground floor is fourteen-eighty-four square feet, that there's two floors, and that the total is forty-five thirty-eight. And so, is that because you are not counting the garage? Is that the idea? And then it is larger up on the top floor?
Are you talking about the existing house?
Yes, the existing house.
How big is the existing house?
Well, you, you talking about living quarters? It'd be a whole entire.
The whole entire house.
I don't even know, I mean.
I think Darren came up with that number.
So Darren came up with it, when he came up with the nine-hundred square foot in-law, he, he calculated that, that you could do a certain percentage.
Right, so you can do twenty-five percent.
That's what he, so whatever he.
And, and so, the, I, I, if I'm, if I'm correctly reading Mr. Kucha's mind, the, it, you know, usually the ground floor, you have a square footage, and if you have two floors, it's usually something like double that, right? Which would put us at just under three thousand square feet. And so, one quarter of three thousand square feet is obviously less than what you're requesting. And so, the question is, I guess my question is, is where is that extra square footage coming from? Is it that, uh, only fourteen-hundred of the square feet on the first floor is residential? And the rest is garage, and then up on the top floor, it's a larger space? What is the, what is the square footage on the top floor? That would just help us, I think.
Your current house.
Of your current house.
You have two floors.
What's a?
Okay.
The current house.
Oh, it's just the top floor?
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
Twelve seventy-six.
We had, we had an addition just gone on.
Yeah.
If you're gonna be offering testimony, you're gonna need to be up at the dais, you're gonna need to be at the microphone.
All right, okay.
No, no, it's, please come up, it's just, we, people on TV cannot hear you if you're sitting down, so.
We recently had an addition put above the garage, so we put a big, um, larger bathroom and a big walk-in closet, so I'm not sure if you're looking at the right square footage.
I think, I, I, I'm gonna rephrase the question, please tell me the square footage of the home?
With, with the addition.
Not the addition you guys are asking for, I'm talking, the addition you have right now, if I walk into your house, right now.
This should be a very simple question for an applicant.
Well, we know that.
What is the gross living area of the home?
Whatever.
Forty-five thirty-eight. Forty-five, and that is composed of what?
How do you derive it, that number?
It was the basement, first floor, second floor, and above the garage.
Then my question is, do we count the basement? Is the basement finished?
Basement's finished, yes.
So it's forty-five hundred.
Put down what you gave me.
Yeah, okay.
So then, what, what I'm seeing is if we're using fourteen-eighty-four as the footprint, then the basement, the first floor and the second floor are all fourteen-eighty-four, which adds up to four-thousand-five-hundred-thirty-eight, I mean, four-thousand-four-hundred-fifty-two feet. I've heard a big round number of forty-five thirty-eight, which includes an addition over an attic, which is eighty-six square feet. Am I, do I have this right?
That sounds right, yep.
When I did my calculations, I did not include the basement.
Neither did I, so that's why, I, I had the same question when I was looking at the numbers, so, I, I apologize for being presumptuous there.
And my question is to the building inspector, are we allowed to count the basement?
Yes.
Okay.
Covered, covered porches, such as your garages.
So, it, so, let me get it straight, even if the basement, even if the basement was unfinished, you would still count it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so. We don't count living area, we count gross floor area.
Well, there's finished.
Like a half floor of the attic.
So that mean the case, well, they have three floors of living space, which makes them eligible for this, I got it, okay. I hear, thanks. All right, so that erases my question.
Problems are solved?
Hmm?
Problems are solved? It's the quickest I've ever seen it.
Yeah, well, well, the numbers don't lie, right?
But the numbers, the numbers do tell a heck of a story, though. And, and, uh. So, the number, this thing is enormous. This, this proposed addition that is thirty feet by thirty-four feet, I don't know if I'm getting it right-ish. So thirty by thirty is, you know, nine-hundred, and seven by four is twenty-eight, so I'm looking at a nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight square foot footprint. Um, times two, times two floors is gonna be another one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-six square feet, added to the four-thousand-five-hundred-thirty-eight square feet of the existing structure. So we're looking at sixty-four, sixty-four hundred square feet of GLA, this is huge. And I don't know how to get past that, because if we've got, if, look, I, I hear that there are preferences in every application. There are preferences, there are needs, there are hardships, there are all, and those are all things that we can, we can discuss. But if we've got four-thousand-five-hundred-thirty-eight square feet of GLA in the existing dwelling, then I gotta believe we can find nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight square feet to give to a family suite somewhere in the existing dwelling, without needing relief from the watershed, without needing fourteen feet, and without needing, well, you still need the special permit for the, for the family suite. But this thing is ginormous. And I don't know how to get past that, numbers don't lie, I agree, Alan.
Numbers don't lie.
And sixty-four hundred square feet of GLA is ludicrous in my mind, but I'm, I'm one person, one opinion.
One of my problems is this, and I forget the name of the street, okay, but, uh, it's the application where we told the guy that he had to move somebody out.
Oh, yeah, that ginormous house that now towers over the entire neighborhood.
What was the word that you just used?
The ginormous house.
The ginormous house, so, so, the ginormous house seems to go with the ginormous house that he's talking about. Okay, and when I drove up that street several times.
Don't get me started.
I, I said, how was that ever allowed to happen? Okay, I mean, it just stands out in the whole neighborhood, okay, and, and somebody says to me, well, what does zoning board do? And, and I went back to the plans, I looked at the plans, and everything was kosher as far as the plans go. Okay, but, but when you drive out to the house, ginormous, okay, that's a new word in Webster's, in Webster's dictionary, by the way. And somehow, Paul, to agree with you, I drove by that property, and that's just a lot of house for the neighborhood. A lot of house for the neighborhood.
Well, it's not, because we have, uh, houses a lot bigger in my neighborhood.
Well, I drove by that neighborhood, I didn't see any.
The house across the street from me is bigger than my house, it's big, they have an in-law, um, addition, right across the street.
In all fairness, I mean, the existing house is not out of character in the neighborhood.
The exist, the existing house is part of the character.
Right, if it, right, but they're just putting an addition onto the house, it's not gonna be, like, attached to the house, like, it, it's not gonna be a monster.
But the addition to putting on the house is basically a separate single-family home with nine-hundred odd square feet of house.
It's nine-hundred square foot apartment.
Nine-hundred-and-thirty-six, I think?
Yeah. A lot of it wouldn't be visible.
Nine-hundred-and-fifty-six.
It would be behind my existing garage.
So, but my, my ask, have you discussed, I assume at some point you've discussed this addition with the neighbors?
Yes, all the neighbors.
And, uh, I, have they written, do you know if they've written in support at all? Or, did they communicate their support to you at least?
They did communicate their support, yeah. And, and in fact, the, uh, the operator who is directly next to where the addition is, um, voiced his, you know, he's in, he has no issues, no, uh, no issues at all.
We sent him a letter, and he sent us a letter back.
Okay.
So, and then.
Has that been submitted?
No, I didn't have it, I didn't want to submit something tonight.
So, it, it's.
I can submit it.
That would, I mean, I.
But I know you don't like to get things. The night of the meeting.
You would incur the wrath of certain members.
Yes, I know, I know, yeah, I know. And, and the way the houses are situated, if, I mean, Ali, you drove down that, if, if, they're not next to each other. So, the neighbor is, this house is up here, and their house is kind of pushed back. So the addition doesn't really infringe on, and that's why he obviously doesn't have an issue.
I drove by it, I saw the application, I, but I see what's going on. The only question I had, okay, was, it has no bearing on this, you, you had a truck behind the house? Was there a covenant that said you have to pop, put the truck behind the house?
No.
But, it was just you, I said it has nothing to do with this, that's all.
No, I have a couple of trucks, I keep, I, very discreet behind my, I have a fenced in yard, nobody sees anything on my property.
The house very well maintained, I did, there's no problem with that.
I, as, as far as scale goes, just this side elevation tells an extraordinary story. The side elevation tells the ginormous story that we were talking about earlier, and I forget the name of the neighborhood.
French Farm, right?
Uh, this one's French Farm, but the, the one that we were talking about.
I don't remember, I burned it out of my brain, I'm so angry.
But, but we all know the house we're talking about.
We do, we know.
And, and when I drove down there and I spoke to you afterwards, you said, how, how did that happen? Because that's totally out of character with the neighborhood, right? Not this one, the other one.
To go, piggyback on to Paul, a few problems I have is, one of your variances, you're looking for half the relief. I don't like double digits when it comes to relief like this, period. Whether it's a neighbor supports it or doesn't support it, I think asking for double digits, and double digits being more or less half, is concerning for me. And I think that concern is added when I look at the drawings, and, and I'm assuming you did this to get your square footage in the family suite.
Yes.
This car is driving into the garage and basically has, I mean, I could probably fit a Mini Cooper into the garage behind this car. So, you're pushing it out further, and I understand it's to get your nine-hundred-and-fifty-six square feet up top. But that's what's creating you to have, you know, a request of such a large amount of relief for that setback, which is something that, that's something that bothers me in terms of asking for, for that relief.
Right.
I also am not a fan, and I know there's a few of them running around town, the family suite, essentially, this is basically like an entirely separate unit. This isn't, you know, a lot of the times when we have family suites come in, it's, they're putting an addition on that's on the back, and literally, there's a door going through a wall from the main house to the family suite, or the family suite's in a basement. This, you're going through like an outside covered.
Right.
Walking area, so it's essentially very, very separate from the main house versus in any way, shape, or form being connected. And I know in the last couple of months, we did have one person who was coming for a family suite, and it was completely separate, I think it was in like a barn, that had been a pre-existing situation. So that bugs me in terms of the family suite being so separated from the main house.
Yeah, I know, we, that's been a, I struggle. Yeah, I know, that's been a, I struggled with that when I was sitting where you are. And it is attached, and I know that's the, you know, I ran it by the building inspector, and as long as they're attached, it's my understanding that it does comply. But I, I know what you're saying, it's not interior. I mean, I remember there's, there were some that were approved that were a lot less attached than this one. And I'm, I know every application's different, and that was before you were on the board, so.
In reality, you're building a single-family home attached by a bree, a breezeway.
It's family suite, but yes.
Okay.
It's less than a breezeway, because at least, well, all it has is, all it is is a roof, right? There's no walls.
Right, and the reason for that is because we wanted to have access to the backyard and not have to go all the way around. So we did discuss, you know, closing in and doing a breezeway sort of room. But we felt it would be easier to have that access. But I just wanted to add that I did notify our ten closest neighbors with, with an actual plan, a three-D dimensional plan of the addition and the home, just to let everyone know, and nobody was against it. I just wanted to say that.
But my problem is this, if we grant this, how do we know somebody on one, two, three Paul Street isn't going to come in with something similar?
Well, every.
We can reject that one.
Every application is on its own merits.
And Alan, I heard the same argument about another recent application I had. I mean, again, it's all, they can come in and they can ask, and every application is different, as you know.
I, I understand, but I, to be honest with you, and, and I think Alex agrees with this. Me, I think zoning board got, has got a little singed on that, whatever the name of this, this street is, right? Paul, what's the name of that street we're talking about?
Yes, you do. It had three properties on it, the tenant.
Knocked out down?
Ferber Ave.
Ferber Ave, that's it.
Dang, thank you.
That's it.
You solved the mystery of the night, now I can have it re-burn into my brain.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and when the house went up, completely out of character with the neighborhood. And, and I said, wow, I'll try not to.
Alan, that's a different, it's a whole different neighborhood, actually, I know.
Yeah, but putting a structure like this, attached to, basically, you're doing the same thing. As, who used the word gigantic?
I did, gigantic, gigantic.
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 And Ferber Ave was three separate.
I, I, I understand.
There wasn't in-laws, there was no in-laws at all, it was a family suite.
I, I mean, as, something that, that I will note here is, is that we had plenty of experience of things like Ferber Avenue, where folks from the neighborhood line up out the door to come and protest, right? And say that, that we don't want this. I do not see that here. And I, you know, maybe, maybe they're, they're uncomfortable coming, or don't have time, or things like that. But like, I'm not seeing any complaint from the neighborhood around it. And, you know, those, in terms of unsightly things, like, I'm not going to see this from one-twenty-five, right? And so I don't know who we'd be offending, who, who they would be offending if not the neighbors.
And can I just add that you barely will see it from French Farm Road, the way it's in the back, to the side.
Sure. I mean, my, you know, I have a little bit more hesitation about the, the watershed district, because the entire thing is sitting in the watershed district, right? It's not that it's partially there, and it's a little bit in, it is all the way in. And, you know, that is, that is our drinking water, and so that is a thing that, you know, that, that district is there for a reason. And, and so that's the thing that gives me the most pause, because that, we're building a lot of space, a hundred percent in the district.
And I, I, I know, I, and it will go to planning and then conservation, and there will be all kinds of. But, but I'm sure. Engineering will be done, but, and over consultants to make sure there's no, and again, I drink that water as well, so.
Yeah.
I'm not looking to pollute the lake.
We took a lot of consideration into the size and the appearance of it, because we do love our home, and don't want to have an unsightly building. So I think it's going to not be huge in.
I, I understand your intent is honorable, no one's denying your intent. However, we don't live in the house forever, we don't own the house forever. Sooner or later, you're going to sell that house. Okay? And when you sell that house, someone's going to go look at that house, and they're going to say, wow, I'm buying a two-family home.
Well, they can't use it like that, though.
The family suite goes away, as you know.
Well, supposedly.
The, the, the only way that would change is if we had an accessory dwelling unit by law.
I have a question. What is the height of the main house at the highest peak?
It was thirty, thirty-point-six, and the addition would be thirty-point-six, same height.
And that's to the peak, right?
Yes, I believe, yes.
I have a couple of questions.
You rolled your eyes. Wow!
That was a mistake.
Not to Alan, she knows.
So is that a shed?
Done with love, right, Alan?
That is just love right here. Is that a shed right there?
The shed is going away.
So you should, might want to put that on there, that to be.
Because I, I saw the shed, yes, and I asked the engineer, and he said, right, the shed.
Because that looks bigger than a eight by ten?
It's a ten by ten, but that'll go away.
Eight by ten is allowed, correct?
Six by six. I mean, eight by eight.
Eight by eight, eight by eight, yep.
That shed was there when we bought the house, if that's the one you're talking about.
Well, it's illegal.
We're not going to need the shed.
You know, when I saw the shed on the plan, I said, Ellen's going to ask about that shit.
You did. But you should have wrote on there, knowing that I was going to ask to be demolished, and then that would have covered, that would have made me happy. So my, my concern and my issue is you're saying that your house is covering this. I'm looking at this, I see a second house right there, the size and height of your existing house. This is.
It's not covering it entirely, let me, I missed.
Half of it?
Yeah.
I mean, you're still seeing, you're coming up, and you're seeing a ginormous structure against another ginormous, is that the right word?
Gigantic.
Gigantic.
Gigantic is the word of the night, everybody, gigantic.
And for me, being that close in that requirement of a relief, it looks like you're having four garages now?
Well, it's three garage doors.
But the other one, looking on the plan, it says it's two. If I'm looking at this, it's saying.
No, that's the existing garage, this is the existing garage that they have.
Oh, okay.
And so that is right here.
Yeah, Alan, the, the addition's one garage.
You sure?
Yes, sweetheart. Sorry. That goes right like that. So these come out, and is right here. This is the garage door.
That's tough. I mean, aesthetically, for me, it does, it's not pleasing to have a house, a house, and then a little breezeway to connect them to. So for me, it does look like it's two houses together on the one lot with the breezeway.
It's not even a breezeway.
Not a breezeway.
Well, would you be happier if it was the same structure but attached?
It's not for me to decide.
It doesn't change the appearance at all.
I, I, I mean, that, I don't know how, I thought it had to be connected like twenty-five percent, or.
We don't have that enough.
That's gone? Look at me with all these old blues.
Well, when you talk about, when you talk about aesthetically pleasing, but I don't think the plans really do justice as far as what it's going to look like. I mean, we were going to put a nice window above the garage and make it.
Not, not two windows, one bigger.
No, one, one nice window, and it's going to be, I mean, if you've seen our house, it's, you'd, you'd understand, you know, you'd know that we're taking very seriously on the way it's perceived by our neighbors.
Absolutely not questioning that, it's just, you have to realize that once you leave and we stamp yes, just like, you know, Alan's saying, I go by Ferber Ave, I'm like, oh my God, how did I approve that? You know, things like that, because when you see it here, and I mean, I know, looking at this, I know what this is going to eventually look at, and I'm going to drive by going, wow, why did, how and why had that gotten approved? Again, for me, it looks like house, house. With the, with the, it looks like it's two structures.
I mean, I.
Doesn't look like it, it is house, house.
There's four houses.
I think part of.
I think part of the struggle here for me, when I think about how big, how, how big this is going to be, is, is that if this was two floors of four hundred and fifty feet stacked on top of each other, right? It would be nine hundred square feet of building, but it would physically be much more compact. But, but, but what you have is, is that because you have four hundred square feet of garage with four hundred and fifty square feet of, of apartment on top of it, it's, sorry, nine hundred square feet of garage, nine hundred square feet of apartment on top of it, that's, you know, eighteen hundred square feet by the metric that we're using to calculate the size of your house, right? And so now it's, it's about half the size of your house, right? And so that's part of what makes it feel so large. It feels like you, there's sort of a, a little bit of a sleight of hand going on with the size calculation, and, and, and that you are counting the garage as part of, and your basement as part of your forty-five hundred to get you the nine hundred and fifty square feet. And then that is being doubled because you have a garage that's not being counted as part of the family suite. I, I, I'm sorry, that sounded really complicated, but.
I know what you mean, and, and we, we just had this discussion before the meeting, and I, it wouldn't make sense not to have a first floor and a second floor. I think it would look even more out of place to have like a one-level family suite. So that's why they put the garage underneath them. Unless you're saying to make the whole thing livable space and not have a garage, but then.
Well, I mean, I, I think about, yeah, I'm thinking basically make the whole, if you had the whole thing as livable space, right? The building would be further from the, from the side, it would be a smaller overall structure. It would not look like two major houses, it would look really like an accessory dwelling unit. And the thing is that if you have, you know, just even qualitatively, if I look at something that has a big garage, and then has a big structure on top of it, it looks like a full house, right? It doesn't really look like it's a small family suite.
Another thing this board, I'm speaking with the board, no one in particular, when they hate to use double digits for variances. And we're looking for, what, fourteen-point-four feet?
Almost half.
Yeah, Jacob's mentioned that.
Almost half. And my thinking would be this, because I understand the, the family suite, and we want to accommodate the elderly, because I'm there.
Can we get that on record?
If we shrink this, if we shrink it, so we're not looking, as Ellen said, as I brought up, two separate homes. Okay, because that's what you're basically asking us to do, is approve, a second home on a lot, connected by a breezeway. Okay? But if you shrink this, you could shrink that number two, couldn't you? Okay, so, so we can get into a single digit instead of almost half. Am I making, am I making sense with that?
It depends on how, I mean, how, how small.
How big is the board?
How small would the livable family suite be to shrink it down enough to.
We're talking about one elderly lady here, I mean.
You're throwing on a half a bathroom, right? So I'm not really sure I understand the need for a half a bathroom.
That was her, she, she really wanted that. It was important to her.
Anybody who's giving testimony needs to be in the microphone, please.
That was my request, because I don't like the idea of somebody after going through my bedroom to throw it as a bathroom. I just thought a small little one would just be, somebody comes, they visit, go to the bathroom, they're not interrupting my, my space.
Just for the record, can you just give your name and your address?
My name's Dwayne Cronin.
And your address?
Fifty-three, I'm Cheryl's mother.
And I, I completely understand, and, and I understand that, that want. I guess one of the things becomes is if we're sitting here saying, you need to shrink it down, because there's, there's the issue and the concern of what you're looking for, for relief. Because I will tell you, half, yeah, you're not going to get that from me, not, not this. I mean, maybe if you were at like ten-point-one, and that's our double digit, maybe. So I'm sitting here looking at it as, what can you cut out? And I understand entirely things like the washer and the dryer and wanting a space for that. I guess when I'm, when I look at the thought process of a family suite, I'm looking at it more of a place for, whether it's the, the parent, the in-law, whoever it is, more them being able to live comfortably in a space that is theirs. Not so much, let's make it most convenient for them to entertain, which could very well be naive and everything based off of my age. I get that. But in terms of trying to figure out how you shrink it, that's something that, that comes into my thought process.
And that would be a question for the builder to see what he could do.
You know, is there shrinking the.
Keep another bath and a half, but maybe find the space somewhere else.
Is there shrinking the dining room and the living room? Is there spaces, and I'm not trying to.
The living room was about fifteen-six by almost ten feet?
I'm not trying to put this woman in a tin can. That is not at all what I'm, I'm saying that I think your daughter should do, because I know my father would probably kill me if I wanted to put him into a tin can, like a sardine. But I, I think the concept needs to be more of your comfort versus an ability to have it be this big, huge thing when it's creating a whole new structure. Because I guarantee you, looking at this, your height can come down, and your, your length and your width can also come down. Because if you're looking to have a car garage in here, you don't need to fit a Mini Cooper behind another car. You don't need essentially what is the size of two car garages. And that's not taking into account the fact that this is so detached. So maybe reworking how you can shrink things, make some of the spaces smaller, might be something I would talk to the builder about. Because the double digits is going to be what kicks you anyway.
With the variance. So how far is the neighbor's house from the property line? And so if this is now, you're asking for, let's, you know, fourteen, fifteen feet here. And so now, if you're, if that's the, if that's the distance to the property line, I'm just curious, from the property line to the neighbor's house, what is the distance there?
Probably at least thirty feet.
At least.
It's got to be, but we know it has to be at least thirty.
Yeah, I'd say closer to fifty, maybe, to his garage.
Pretty far.
So you said fifteen to his garage?
Fifteen.
Fifty.
It estimated to be fifty.
Probably sixty, right, because the thirty-foot side setbacks would be thirteen, thirty, would be sixty, right?
Yeah, but then you remove the garage.
Do you think his house is further away than the setback?
From the, no, not the setback, no, from the property line, I'd estimate it to be fifty feet.
Fifty.
From the lawn line. That's wooded, too.
Yeah.
We have a minute?
You can have two.
Sure.
But that's not.
No, I know, because I didn't. So the garage door could actually be smaller. Which would make it still be overfit. I'm just not visualizing, I mean, I thought the driveway was there, okay, I mean, so that's. You know, from the front, you go over and look at it by any chance?
No. I've been in the neighborhood.
From the front here, it was amazing, because you could not see that there, there was no detection to me that there was a pool back there. Nor, it looked to me, I thought the biggest issue was going to be the conservation, because the bathroom.
We have to continue to next one. Reevaluate the plan and.
One thing I want to ask, just because I'd throw this out there, the garage door for the addition. Is that an oversized garage door? Or like, is it, because you know they have the garage doors that are wider versus the one, you know, like my car garage.
Like a size of the garage and a half, twelve feet, I believe.
So it's an oversized garage?
So it's an oversized garage door? So that can.
So that can be shrunk, too?
That can be shrunk. I mean, I, I will say, and I guess I'm probably thinking a little bit more about my own father. I will add, I, and this is just me, I worry about a family suite for someone who's older being on a second floor. I mean, that's just my own, that's not something that would stop, but I think if you could really hide this behind the house, which I think really would essentially be putting it without a garage, so it's more, I guess, in height with your current garage, then it.
The, the pool would be in the way.
Why? If you take off the garage, so get rid of the garage and put the family suite.
Yeah.
Right down on the ground. The swimming pool's way over.
Like the size of the addition.
She's saying just lose the garage.
Lose the garage. Because then that allows for you to make the height, the height would then be the, essentially, my assumption would be, much closer to the height of what your current garage is, right now. Because you, you have a garage right there, which really allows for it to kind of be tucked back there.
To my earlier point, it turns what is right now basically a nineteen-hundred square feet building, foot building.
Into nine hundred and fifty-six. And if you can shrink. And if you can shrink it a little to get us down to single, or, you know, closer to the, the ten point one under the two digits, you have that.
The ten point, ten-one variance.
Yeah, the, the, the side setback that you're looking at, if we can bring that down as close as possible to single digits. I can't totally speak for the board, obviously, but I know many members of the board do not like double digits.
I, yeah, I've heard that.
That's not to say you might, that's not to say you might not get away with ten point one.
Right.
Double digits, but I, I can tell you right now, you're not getting fourteen. That's, that's a guarantee. That's my two cents, if you're going, because I don't want you to waste your time. If you're going to go back to your builder and see what you can rework, if you can shrink it so we can get out of that double digits, losing the garage would be, would really bring this down in scale. And again, that's just, that's from my two cents on the board, brings it down so that it doesn't look like house, little garage, big house. Because that's essentially visually what this does look like. I think you might have more, more pull.
You know, looking at this, the block line has been covered. It appears to me, and I see this swimming pool, they could still shade this over a little bit more behind the house.
If they make the garage door, if they were to keep the garage.
If they eliminate the garage, it's.
If they eliminate the garage, yeah.
Well, that was one of the issues too, to have it at the end of the driveway, so.
And I guess the thing becomes is you have two car garages, so it's not a situation where you're getting rid of a garage so you need to replace it. You have two car garage, you've been living functioning with two car garage, so I'm assuming two car garage works.
Well, it's for her. I know, so.
We can't make everything work.
No, I understand, but, you know, that would correct your problem, but what about, you know, the other problem of it's semi-attached, somebody's not happy about that, and then somebody's not happy because it looks like two different buildings. I mean, how can we please everybody?
And I guess I sit here.
Everyone seems to have a different issue.
That's the challenge of the applicant, yeah.
And I guess one of.
If it's satisfying enough for the board to get passed.
One of the things becomes is I understand your, your want and your need, and the niceness of being able to, my assumption is you wanted to be able to walk out and go right back to your backyard, right?
Yes.
Okay, so again, I'm not an architect. A thought is, can you put a wall up on one side? Can you kind of make this become a little bit more connected in some way, shape, or form? I mean, I understand what you want, and I, I get it. But I guess the question becomes is what becomes more of a priority? If, if the disconnect is going to become an issue for the board, then you might have to find a way to connect it. I don't know what your builder, the architect, can do to make it, you know, function and pleasant for you guys and also more connected. I mean, screen doors are great.
Well, and again, I.
Sliders are great.
I know people have an opinion as far as the attachment, but it, you know, it does comply with the bylaw as far as the attachment here.
And I completely understand you with that, and we have some board members who get very concerned about additions that are very much connected, but still have the ability that down the road, and this kind of just becomes the default that the applicant, down the road, it could essentially be something that's used as a rental property. And that's always something that kind of gets put in the back of some board member's minds, which becomes concerning. This really does look like a separate dwelling. I mean, and again, one of the things is being able to connect with the main house. So in this case, your mother, in the middle of winter, she's coming to the main house, is coming out of her unit through the freezing cold and into the main house.
Right.
I wouldn't want that.
There's no other way to connect it, though. There's no other way to connect it.
Well, that's up to the architect.
The garage is there.
That's.
You see, everything she described is to me would differentiate a separate home and an in-law suite. Why would you want someone to be exposed to the cold?
I get that, but we.
So I guess that comes back to your builder, your architect. They can do phenomenal things with computers. So you have what we say, and you kind of just throw it at them, and unfortunately, sometimes it's a lot of trial and error. And if the end result ends up getting you your family suite, which is what your primary goal is, then the trial and error is a lot of the times worth it for most applicants.
I mean, I, I will say, I, I am probably one of the more permissive people on this board, and probably, if not the most. And, you know, for me, a lot of this is like a victimless crime, right? Like, a lot of this is the neighbors are okay with it, it's your property. You know, other than the watershed, which has larger impacts, like the rest of it is kind of like, you, you should be able to do with your own property what you want, and who is it, why is it for us to decide that? But that, I'm unfortunately just one vote on this, right? And, and figuring this out means negotiating folks with people who have different opinions than me on those things. And, and frankly, the town bylaws, which give us the right to look at these and to make comments. You know, to your point, it, it conforms with the, with the letter of the regulation, but the letter of the regulation also says that you still need to come to us for a special permit, right? And, and yet the reason for that is to give us a way to look at it that goes beyond simply what the letter of the law is. And so, you know, for better or for worse, that is, that is the system that we have. And so we, we've given you a lot of things to look at. In the end, usually we get to a place where we don't get everything we want, you don't get everything you want, but we are close enough on all of those that we're willing to accept it and go forward. But, and if not, then, then, then sometimes we're at an impasse too, and that happens too.
Can I say something? For me, Michael, this means nothing, you know, just like you said, so certain things, you said, you raised an objection about the water district there, about the house. Why don't you explain any problems that you have with them right now, so they can correct it before they come back?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if I have.
You can do it all at once.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I have a.
Nothing we could do on the watershed, Alan.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't.
For me, it wasn't a problem.
No, 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 I, no.
I, I mean, for me, I would want, I, I think what I would want, I know you have to go through the full mitigation with everybody else, but just even just some educational outline of like, what, what the general idea would look like for how you would mitigate any risks attached to it. So not, not a detailed plan, I wouldn't want a detailed plan, I wouldn't want schematics and things like that, but just a, like, this is what, you know, at first blush, we would have to worry about if we did this, these are the things we'd have to correct. Even just like a bullet pointed list on a half a page would be enough for me. I don't need, I, I don't want to do detailed plans, because we have other boards that do that, and that's their business. I just want to know that there's a pathway down there, because the risk always comes that we approve it, and then you go to the next board, and you say to the next board, well, the zoning board appeals was fine with it, thus, you know, they must have done their due diligence, just like I'm saying, those other boards are going to do their due diligence.
That works. You wish.
And it's funny, Michael, when, as you, you all know, I was on the board, and I used to have the same.
Do you want to come back?
What's that?
Do you want to come back?
This opening.
And that was an issue I always had with the watershed. And I'd say, you know, we never really got information about the watershed. We would just kind of say, okay, move it on to the planning board, and let the planning board look at the details. So that's why I did, my experience was that you weren't going to ask a lot of questions with the watershed. So I understand, because you're asking the same things I used to say, like, why aren't we getting more information?
Yeah, and, and like I said, I don't want, like, tons of detail, I just want just a rough idea of what it would look like.
And I, I can, I could talk to Dennis Grecchi, the engineer, about that, because he would be the one that would be preparing the.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and I don't want us to spend forty-five minutes of having him come in and present stuff like, don't, please don't do that. But, but just something very brief would be helpful.
Just, just for the sake of, of clarity, I think, and from me, a few things. One is, and this is not to step on anybody, I don't get concerned about whether there's an attachment here. I don't get concerned whether this is an accessory building, or, or it's, you know, the, an attached building. That's not something that, that troubles me too much. The watershed also doesn't trouble me too much, as long as, like Michael is saying, give me some identifi, identify what you think you're going to do, that way it makes me feel like I've done a little bit of due diligence on the watershed protection, because like everybody has said already, there are other boards who are more expert in that stuff that's going to be looking at it. I am a jillion percent exercised by the, you know, just the scale that we have here, going from forty-five thirty-eight to sixty-three ninety-four is a forty percent, a forty-one percent increase in GLA, and I can't, I can't abide by that, again, just to be clear. The elevations that, that showing the, the extraordinary mass that this building is putting, both on the side and the front, you can see three quarters of the, the proposed building from French Farm Road, for crying out loud, and that's a lot of building to see in the house-house metric that Ms. McIntyre was talking about. So I'm exercised by the height and the massing of the buildings, as well as just the, the gross GLA that we've got going on here. And finally, I'm going to encourage you, get, get some neighbors on, get some of the neighbors on the record. I, I want to see that stuff, because I, I don't have any reason to believe or disbelieve an applicant when he or she says the neighbors are totally on board, they love this, they love us. So, you know, like Jerry Maguire, show, show me, show me, show me the letters, show me the, bring them to the, to the hearing, you know, if you want.
We did, I just didn't want to submit them.
We won't yell at you.
Some of us won't yell at you.
The, the chair will make sure.
I'm not going to roll my eyes. I have a, I do have a question about the watershed.
And if you have a three, if you have a three D something, then, I mean, share it with us. I mean, it's, it's, it's a little baffling to me why applicants keep the powder dry. You know, if you've got letters, I appreciate that you don't want to offend Ms. McIntyre, but it certainly would have pleased me, might have pleased others, and Ms. McIntyre can go pound sand on late and stuff like that. And why you would hold a, a three D model, you know, in, in your front pocket, back pocket, or whatever, and not give us the, we love pretty pictures.
I, I know, I, I, that's.
So let's, let's have that in, in June as well.
I don't know where that is.
I do have a question on the watershed, not for this, just going forward, if there's someone comes in with a watershed, special variance in the watershed, are we going to want this going forward on all applications? Just in case I have another watershed.
Al, Al Manzi would have you doing soil testing, so I, I'm, I'm not sure that, that's a, the right kind of direction to be taking. And I don't have an opinion, I don't have an opinion on that.
You know what, it's, it's a nice thing to have, this is what we're going to do, A, B, and C. And then that's all, I think, what this board is requesting, not having that, you know, three hundred pages of the, you know, the soil test.
No, I, I just, I want to know going forward, because I might have another application coming up.
I'm one vote, but, and if you were, I don't know, three, if a part of the building was three or four feet into the watershed, I probably wouldn't even bother, right? But for, it, it's just because the whole thing's in the watershed district, that I was like, okay, this is a big feature of what this is, that way, then, then I want to know that you at least have a plan. Again, if it was three or four feet, and, and the, the watershed district goes like, you know, what is it, fifty feet, a hundred feet out from the water? It, it, it's, you know, I don't, I, you know, maybe I'm too simplistic, but I don't think about that much encroachment, that much. But, but because the whole thing's in, that, for, for me, one vote, that's, it's helpful.
Bullet point, bullet point.
Yeah.
Summary.
Bullet pointed summary.
Essay.
Can even be a transcript of a phone conversation, like.
You know, actors, we bar exam essay.
And for the record, I just want to clarify why I requested information prior to the meeting, because I did my, I did my homework. I went to properties, I looked at it, and I assessed everything, and I had a plan in my head when I came to the meeting. When someone put a wrench in that, that would make me very upset, because I had an agenda and, and my, you know, again, putting the time into it, not just coming in here and saying, oh, what's going on? So the reason why, and I figured the applicant had enough time to get all the information together, they can grant me the respect of providing me a piece of paper that said X, Y, and Z.
I, that's why.
That's the reason why I've always requested information prior to the meeting, not at the meeting.
She wants it on record, because next month is her last meeting.
I, I heard that.
Well, I want it on record that I am not nearly that rigid.
Correct, because on record, next month is Paul's last meeting as well.
Again, we have two openings.
You'd have to recuse yourself from this one, though.
And the next one, that you said that's coming down the pipeline.
Can I say something before we get out of such a call?
I was closing this up.
Totally, totally disagree with you, where, where you say you don't care if it's attached to or a separate single, or a separate dwelling. Okay, so by giving them a separate dwelling, you're really allowing two separate structures on a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, now, I haven't gone through the zoning bylaws and everything else, but quote, that doesn't become an, an in-law apartment now, that becomes a dwelling. Okay, I always would think that a in-law apartment would somehow be attached to the original structure.
I, I would think that too, unfortunately, that's not how the codes are.
Well, it is, by the little roof.
Well, it's attached.
Okay, yeah, but, but to allow a separate, single-family structure, should, should we have allowed this to wait to, in reality, you're allowing a separate, single-family home.
And maybe we need to look to change the zoning.
Okay, a separate, single-family home, two homes on one lot. And not even meeting zoning requirements, that's why we're setbackting, right? And then the watershed area.
Okay, forget about all of that. If you want to change the connection aspect, I think that's changing the, changing the bylaws.
Yeah, but, yeah, but it's supposed to be an in-law.
I understand that, but the roof.
An in-law, okay, to help somebody take it with, you know, and, you know what I mean.
I agree with you, but apparently, I, I do, that it should be more connected.
Wow, that's amazing.
Good thing it's on record.
It is.
According to the rules, the roof is connected. Do I like it? No. So, what would you like to do?
Continue.
Unless Jen's going to pipe in, I believe that would be June fourteenth.
Is this yours or mine?
Jen?
Yours.
Do we need to make a motion?
I think.
Well, I just want to know what day.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I believe it's June fourteenth. Jen is playing half hooky on us tonight.
Oh, that might be mine.
No.
That's, sorry, Ellen.
Yeah, she's probably doing her dishes.
You can tell just by looking at her calendar, right? June fourteenth.
Yeah, I believe that's what it is.
Make a motion to continue to June fourteenth?
Can I have a second?
A second motion.
And we are continued to June fourteenth?
We need to vote on.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I hate that I have to bring you guys into this.
We can voice vote it.
Can we voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, any opposed? No?
We're continuing.
We're continuing, good luck. I'm not done yet, am I?
No.
Okay, we have miscellaneous correspondence from Chappa. Apparently, Mr. Koch is still important enough.
Former chair, says it right there.
And I don't believe we have to do anything on this, correct?
All right, then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hold on, we have another thing, from Department of Housing and Community Development. Just didn't notice.
I'll restate my motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Okay, we are adjourned.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Beautiful, we're done.